Good evening, everyone.
I look to.
I would like to call the South St. Paul School Board Meeting of Monday, April 10th, 2023 to order. Lisa, will you call the role?
Director Claflin.
Here.
Lala Bertie.
Here.
T Felton.
Here.
Beerman.
Yes, sir.
Weber.
Here.
W Felton.
Here.
And Chair Roche.
Present.
At seven present at 6:00 P. M.
All right, could we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Got a little lost on my way through there. All right, I will ask for a motion to approve our agenda for this evening as well as the Committee of the Whole from April 10th, 2023. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, the best part of our meeting, we get to do move on to quality in action with our activities director, Brady Kruger. Welcome.
Thank you. Thanks again for inviting me back to come and talk about our winter sports season. Thanks again to Dr. Zambrino, School Board members, and the high school and middle school administrators. Again, all for their continued support of our activities program and support of Packer Athletics and activities. Again, tonight coming before you to highlight some of our coaches, advisors, and students as well as our programs. Tonight, again, you're going to see some incredible students, some athletes, some performers. As the activities director here, it's my goal to make sure that we have an activities department and programs that not only produce good students, performers, and athletes, but also good quality people. And so we really want to take some time to highlight those kids today. We also want an activities program that enables students to be involved in multiple activities, and I think you will see that today as the kids get up here and talk. Many of them are coming from practices or theater performances and so on. So we will kind of be in and out. These kids have a lot of things going on. But again, one of the nice things about South St. Paul is they have the opportunity to be involved in multiple things at our school. Many of these kids that will get up here and speak today excel in all phases. They are great students, great athletes, and also great people, heavily involved in the school community as well. I also want to take a moment and recognize our coaches, advisors, that work with these individuals every single day. They do incredible, incredible work. And they have a very unique opportunity to serve as some very powerful role models for these kids and help shape not only their high school career and high school days, but also post-high school. So without further ado, we will get started. And the first program that I'm going to call up, he volunteered, our wrestling program, Mr. Don Nyheart.
All right, good evening, School Board Chair Roche and Superintendent Zambrino and members of the board. Thank you so much for inviting us here tonight to share a little bit about the accomplishments of our student athletes and a little bit about our programs. I am very fortunate, along with our coaching staff, to be able to work with some really great kids as well as their families. This was my 20th year of leading our boys' wrestling program and second year leading our girls' wrestling program. And all in all, we had a really fun and really productive season this year. Boys' team finished off their season with a 20- and 10 record. They finished as Section 4AA team runner-ups, made the section finals, came up short there, qualified five wrestlers for the state tournament, and had six wrestlers earn Academic All-Section. The team ended up earning Academic All-State Gold honors with a 3.614.
Way to go.
So it's good, good season for the guys. The girls' team finished up with a 3-1-1 dual meet record, which was our first season where we got to actually accumulate a dual meet record for the ladies' team in our second State High School League season. Finished the season ranked number four in the state in the dual meet version of wrestling. They had seven girls who ended up earning medals at the section tournament. We had one girl that earned Academic All-Section and had two of them qualify for the state tournament, and both of them ended up being All-State in the Girls' State High School League State Tournament. We have several of them here tonight, and we're just going to share a little bit about them. I'm just going to share about Ty Birchstold, who's an eighth grader. Ty is over here in the blue. He had 24 varsity wins this season. He finished as a section runner-up and was a first-time state qualifier for us. And he was named the most improved wrestler on our team. Tomas Ochaki behind. I'll just have them put a hand up there. Tomas had 31 varsity wins this year. He earned Academic All-Section and qualified for the state tournament for a second time. Cinco is not here, but Shane Schwab is. And Shane, he had 34 varsity wins this season, was a captain of our team and a state qualifier for a second time, kind of a third time when he looked at the COVID year. Nate Birchstold, a junior, had 41 varsity wins. Nate was a captain for the boys' team. Nate earned All-Conference this year. He also set the all-time school pins record. So in all of the history of South St. Paul, he set the 30-pin record. He was named co-outstanding wrestler for our team. Giselle Gallegos. Giselle had 22 varsity wins. On our girls' team, she was a captain of our girls' team. She was also a state qualifier. She also placed at the state tournament, making her All-State and was named our outstanding wrestler for the girls' team. Andrew Schwab is a junior, had the most varsity wins on our team with 42. He was a captain of the boys' team. He earned All-Conference. He earned Academic All-Section. He was a state qualifier for a third time and was our co-outstanding wrestler. And Andrew Bonk. Andrew had 35 varsity wins, was a team captain for us, set the school record with Nate in pins, which is just, it was a big deal, was honorable mention All-Conference. He also earned Academic All-Section, was our boys' MVP. And Ella George. Ella is a junior. Ella had 20 varsity wins this year. She was a captain of our girls' team, had most pins on her team. She was Academic All-Section. She was a section champ, and she also earned All-State honors and was our team MVP for the girls. Had a lot of fun working with these kids. Thank you for all that you do to support our programs. And again, thanks for having us here tonight.
Way to go. Sure. Congratulations.
Great job, kids. Great job.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Great job, ladies.
Nice.
Congratulations.
Way to go.
Congratulations.
Mr. Don Nyheart does an absolutely fantastic job with our wrestling program and has done an absolutely fantastic job in growing that girls' program. I think we are really excited to see what the future holds for girls' wrestling at South St. Paul. I don't know if he mentioned it, but we do have one of the larger girls' programs out there right now. And again, we're very excited to see what happens in the future. Next up, I'm going to bring up girls' hockey and Mr. Dave Palmquist.
Thank you very much. It's hard to follow, Donny. Good job, Donny. What a great group. Congratulations to all the coaches here tonight and all the athletes here tonight. We've got quite a tremendous group of young people here in South St. Paul. Thank you to Dr. Zambrino and to the school board. We really appreciate all of your support throughout the years. We just completed our 29th year. It's hard to imagine. I only brought two of these girls tonight, but we could have brought an amazing group of kids. And it's amazing what can, a team can accomplish when you put individual desires and wants aside. And this group, I'm going to just name off 10 seniors who all had different roles within our program and just, just did tremendously with them. And these are just two of the 10 that I want to mention. So with me tonight is Sarah Winstonson, captain, and Delaney Norman, senior captain. Sarah was also an All-State Academic achiever with a 3.8 GPA or higher. Uli Josewak was an All-State Academic qualifier with a 3.8 GPA or higher. Lauren Buckin, Kylie Stengel, Aleah Danielson, Inga Olkerking, All-State Academic 3.8 or higher, Kylie Ephesich, Maya Wills, and our manager Kylie Hardina with a 3.8 GPA or higher. So all of those should be recognized. I coached a lot of teams, and it's amazing to have 10 seniors. This is one of the biggest groups we've had over the years, and they all came together and just did an incredible job. We finished the season with a 23-6-1 in record. We made our 17th state tournament appearance, third place at the state, which we had to beat a lot of good teams throughout the year. This little town of South St. Paul accomplished a lot, and it was because of these two young ladies and a lot of kids that put team first. Most importantly, great community support throughout the season, throughout the playoffs, and at the Excel Energy Center. Just amazing, this community, what they do and respond to these girls and our student athletes. A little bit about these girls, like Brady said, they are three-sport kids, all involved in school activities, stuff. They're just all in. And that's what makes it so proud to coach them, that they're just, just not here doing this one thing, but they're all in for South St. Paul and for our student and for our community. I thought I would, I would like them to speak, but Delaney is going to, is a goaltender since eighth grade, and she's going to set, over the 29-year history of South St. Paul, have all, basically, the records of South St. Paul. She played for five years and was, was an amazing goaltender. She'll attend St. Ben's and play softball and hockey there, so that's pretty exciting, get to play two sports. Sarah Winstonson is one of the true bate leaders that I've had here at South St. Paul. She'll go to St., University of St. Thomas, so give it up for Sarah for that. Sarah was also, in the state tournament, she was a social media star, probably getting over a million hits with her game-winning goal against Fergus Falls in that double overtime game. It was, I think I watched it probably a million times myself. I'll probably go home and watch it tonight. It was, she scored the winning goal, and Delaney was making all the saves. So two really special kids for our community and just a special group of athletes to coach, so I'm very proud. So, South St. Paul girls' hockey, thank you.
Way to go. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Great job, girls. Great job.
Congratulations.
I do also want to highlight that Sarah Winstonson is our Athena Award winner this year, and that's a tremendous honor. She's been an absolute wonderful role model here at the school and so on. Other big Minnesota State High School League awards that I don't know if we have actually formally brought to the board to recognize, but I'd like to do that today, our AAA Award winner was Malia Meyer. And our, yeah, you can applause.
In-house.
And our two Excel Award winners, we have Ava Waska. She's probably busy with some athletics and activities, but I did see Andrew Bonk here. He was our Excel Award winner. That is a award that recognizes achievements for our juniors. All right, next up, we have one of our new coaches this winter. We are very excited that she decided to come work for us. She is our gymnastics coach, and she has done an absolutely phenomenal job in her first year. She's done a phenomenal job at starting and growing that gymnastics program over at Central Square. So I'm going to bring up Taya Tajes.
Hi, everyone. My name's Kaya. This is my first year as head coach of the gymnastics team for South St. Paul. And I'm also the community, the community ed coordinator for our kids' programs. I just want to say, be my first year here, this is an incredible group of girls. They are so motivated and hardworking. I was thoroughly impressed. I love that our practice is very student-centered and allows them a voice in how they would like practice to go. This allows them some room for growth and improvement. Most of our athletes are beginners with no prior experience in competition, which is huge for high school athletics. That's a lot of growth to be had. And by the end of the season, most of those athletes had competition-worthy routines and were competing for their first time ever. Our potential for growth is huge. Our entire middle, our entire JV squad this year was middle schoolers, so seventh and eighth graders, which I think is incredible. They really held their own, and seeing them grow was, was amazing. Our biggest, our biggest achievements this year were really the small ones. Our competition was tough, and although we did have a lot of losses, these girls came back strong every meet, and they continued to grow and improve individually with their scores and their skills and their confidence every meet. And I just want to give them a huge round of applause for that. My two seniors here, Margaret and Elias, they are both incredible leaders on our team. Margaret is our captain for the last two years. And Elise here has also been an incredible leader on our team. They're both involved in other programs. Margaret does track and volleyball, and Elise does our show choir and, I believe, theater as well. So these girls are all in and really, really dedicated, often jumping between practices and running back and forth between different, different things. So it's really impressive. Margaret here was our MVP and also was All-Section's honorable mention for floor. I just found out. She, I'll have, I'll pass this off to Margaret. She has something to say.
I joined the gymnastics team as a seventh grader with a lot of lessons in gymnastics, but zero experience competing, and I was terrified. But through encouragement and from my coaches and teammates, I had the courage to compete my first meet. And a few months later, I earned my first varsity letter in February this year. I earned my sixth and final varsity letter. I've gotten to know many different people, and I've grown because of them. Previous captains and upperclassmen have taught me to be, how to be a leader and a role model. And after a few years, I became a role model to the younger athletes on the team, and I learned how to make strong connections with my teammates and how to mentor and guide them and have fun during our short season. Although I still have a couple of months before graduation, I can confidently say that my most precious and favorite high school memories took place in the Central Square Gymnastics Gym, with fort-building inside jokes and late-night group chat messages at the top of my list. Of course, in addition to that, was my hours upon hours in the gym with my favorite people. Joining the high school gymnastics team is by far one of the best decisions I have made, and I wish the best for the future of the program.
Next, we have Elise, one of our seniors.
I'll just say something short. I've been doing gymnastics for about 12 years now, and I've been on the high school team for three. And I do have to say, competing on the high school team was my best experience with a competitive team. The environment is amazing, and the younger ones are like siblings to us. It's super funny. And I love like hugging them on the hallways. It was just a really great team to be a part of this year. And so, yeah, and one of my best friends I met on the team, Margaret. So, thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to share about our program.
Congratulations.
Yes, thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we're going to do our boys' hockey program. So we have two representatives from the boys' team back there, Machek Francis and Joe Schaefer. Interesting little side note about Machek. Machek, your grandpa actually played for hockey, South St. Paul, right?
Yes, he did.
So one of the unique things about South St. Paul that I have learned during my short stint here is that it is a very tight-knit community. It is pretty unique that you have families like Machek's where grandpa played for South St. Paul, parents played for South St. Paul, and now they're kind of playing for South St. Paul. So you just have kind of that unique aspect. Next to me is Joe Schaefer as well, captain of the boys' hockey team. Both of these guys represent some of the best things about our student athletes at South St. Paul High School. They are great leaders, they're great students, they're great people. These guys do all the right things whenever you need them, and sometimes without even being asked. Some of the highlights of the boys' hockey season, we ended up with three boys' honorable mention in the Metro East Conference, and the Metro East Conference is an incredibly tough conference for hockey. I think Mr. Palmquist alluded to that on the girls' side, but it's an incredibly tough conference on the boys' side as well. So Joe Schaefer was an All-Conference honorable mention, Ray Rosales was All-Conference honorable mention, as well as Wyatt Chaney, All-Conference honorable mention. But again, one of the big highlights that we want to kind of touch on is the academics of the boys' hockey team. Nine boys' hockey players were gold academic All-Conference and with a 3.7 GPA or higher. And then seven boys' hockey players came in with a 3.4 GPA or higher. So these men represent, again, what is some of the best of our student athletes. They get it done in the classroom as well as on the ice. Our boys' hockey program also does a great job of getting involved with the youth. They really do a great job of incorporating the little ones of South St. Paul. They're constantly working with them, constantly skating with them. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it over. These gentlemen are going to share kind of some highlights for the year, and then we will move on.
Hi, I'm Machek Francis, and obviously I'm on the boys' hockey team. But I think that the entire year has just been great, you know, overall. My high school career as a hockey player has just been phenomenal experience, and I think that I've grown as a person through my struggles in hockey and just overall the community base around it. And I think that this year, my best memory would have to be senior night, having all of the younger guys come up, show me that they actually care and they appreciate what I've done for them and what they are going to be doing for the younger generation, and just showing that they, they can lead, which was really cool to see. So, thank you.
I'm Joe Schaefer, and I think probably my favorite memory of the team this year was helping out with the youth program. You know, a lot of our guys gave a lot of hours to helping run practices and events for the little kids. And they come to our games, we come to their practices, help run, and I think it's a great system we got going on.
Awesome. Congratulations.
Shout out Kay Francis.
Congratulations.
Good job, guys.
Thank you, boys. Thank you.
All right, next up, I'll bring up our boys' basketball coach, Mr. Darren Edwards.
How you guys doing?
Great.
Doing well.
This is my first year as full-time head coach here at South St. Paul for the boys' basketball program. I brought a few of my players up here with me. This year, we finished 20- and 8. We lost in the second round of sections to St. Thomas. We had two guys finish top All-Conference, Gavin Pendergast and Davon Simmons. And then we had three guys finish All-Honorable Mention, which was Alonzo Simmons, America Fitch, and Nasir Jones. Our whole program, to my knowledge, and I've been trying to get Brady to figure this out, but this is the first time since I've been here. I've been on the staff four years. This is my first year as a head coach. But this is the first time since I've started here that all programs in the basketball program finished above 500. Our freshman team. Our freshman team won a total of, I think, six games my first three years here. This year, we brought in a younger, more energetic coach in Devon Mo. He's an SSP alum. They went 14- and 10. He really coached those young guys, pushed them hard. Our B squad finished 6- and 5. They only played conference. Our JV finished 14- and 10, and I've actually finished overall 20- and 8. I think my most memorable moment this year was youth night when we played Simly. We had all the SSP guys out there. I think they kind of got to experience firsthand what it's like to be a part of the SSP-Simly rivalry, so it was pretty cool. I'm going to let these guys share a few of their memories as well.
So probably some of my favorite memories as South St. Paul basketball player is just after every game, you know, especially the wins, just being with your teammates and that time in the locker room, like maybe with some music and stuff like that. It's just a really like happy moment. And then being on the court with them, like getting cool assists and all of that stuff to, you know, like show how close we are and just spending time together outside of basketball, too. And it just brings us all together. So that's just overall what I like most about it, so.
Probably some of my best memories for our team was definitely like getting those comeback wins down 20, 30. Those are fun moments. And then going as a team, play bowling. Probably like before games, we're all getting hyped, just jumping around. And especially playing against our conference rival. Everyone comes down and supports us, so that's probably one of the best moments.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Good job, guys.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. All right, next I'm going to bring up Mr. Conrad Anderson and our Knowledge Bowl program. I don't know if Malia was here when I recognized her as our, she was?
Yep.
Okay, well, again, Malia Meyer, AAA Award winner.
Good evening. I'm Conrad Anderson. I'm the Knowledge Bowl coach. We had a phenomenal season this year. In fact, we've had Knowledge Bowl at South St. Paul probably for about 20 years. I've been the coach for about the last seven or eight. I'm not even sure what, how many it's been now, but we have never had a team that was consistently this good. So we, our, our top team, I have two members here. I have Logan Lamont, he's a sophomore, and I have Malia Meyer, one of our captains this year. She's a senior. Along with Evan Sanford, who's a senior, and Jamison Hammond and Cooper Meyer, a couple of more sophomores. They, we have three regular season meets where we compete against, in the metro area, against all the schools in the metro area that have Knowledge Bowl. And we, we are by far the smallest public school that's there, and we finished in the, we finished fifth place in regular season, which is, which is amazing when you're looking at the number of students that these schools have that they can draw from. And we actually got an automatic bid right to the region tournament. That's never happened before at South St. Paul. And then we, at the region tournament, we finished just outside of sixth place. The top six went to state. Unfortunately, our section doesn't have A, AA, AAA state does, but we have to compete against all the big schools, and so we just missed going to state for the first time. But I, the, what these students know is absolutely amazing. I don't, I don't think they necessarily want to talk, but if you want to ask them, it could be a question. I'm sure they'll answer. But we spend, we go from November to February, and I think, just I counted in practices this year, we practiced over 1,000 different questions, ranging from, you know, math questions, science, a lot of social studies, humanities types of questions, current event questions have to be on there. And so the students just had, have to know a lot of different things. And, and it's just a phenomenal group of students I'm working with. So congratulations on a great season, guys.
So Conrad, we're not playing Trivial Pursuit against this crowd, right?
You don't want to.
Thanks, Malia.
Okay, next up, we'll bring up our girls' basketball program. Our girls' basketball program was headed by another new coach to South St. Paul, Isaac Douglas.
Hi. Sorry. I'm Isaac, Isaac Douglas. This was my second year on the staff for the girls' basketball team. My first year was the head coach, but I was an assistant coach last year. With me today, I have Lauren Bauer, a senior captain on our team. Our other captain was supposed to be here today, but she went homesick from school, so she will not make it. We'll get to her in a second, but first off, just a couple of quick highlights from our season this year. We finished the season 10- and 17, which was good for, tied for fifth in the conference. That 10-win total is our highest win total since the 2012-13 season. So that's a plus. And we also won our first-round section game, and we're able to host our first-round section game for the first time since the 2012-13 season. So that was a lot of fun this year, and basically the biggest win that we had on the season was when we beat Hill Murray in early January. We haven't beat Hill Murray one time since the '03-'04 season. So that win felt really nice, especially being down late in the second half and making a comeback and winning that one. And Hill Murray actually ended up going to state out of their section, so kind of felt good late in the season for that one as well. Turning to Lauren here, like I said, senior captain, she was our leading scorer. She was our one player on the team that was All-Conference, and then we had two honorable mentions after that. Anna Squera, who I said wasn't able to be here today, was our other captain, and then Scarlett Johansson as well, who's a sophomore. Like I said, Lauren was our leading scorer, but what she did for us on the court really doesn't compare to what her and Anna did for us off the court. We have a great group of girls. to what her and Anna did for us off the court. We have a great group of girls and just the community that we had amongst them was incredible. When I held our postseason meetings with our girls, all of them were just raving about the connectedness that we had in our program. And I give all that credit to Lauren and Anna Jo. They did a great job. They made sure girls were in the locker room after school. We had an hour between when school ended and when practice started. And from what I understood, that was the favorite part of their day. Just getting to spend time with each other and getting to enjoy that. So again, thank you for that. And thank you for your continued support.
Congratulations. Definitely snagged one of these.
Great job.
Thank you.
All right, and next up, I'm going to bring up Dance and head coach Roz Wilson.
Hi, I'm Roz Wilson. I'm the head coach of the South St. Paul Dance Team. I'd like to introduce our team representatives here with us tonight, Taylor Ambrose and Morgan Carter. On behalf of the coaching staff and team, we just want to say thank you for having us here and letting us talk about our season and recognizing our team. The season was full of new and exciting changes. I'd been with the program for seven years coaching, and this was my first time taking over as the head coach. And we also had no seniors this year. So anyways, the dancers showed great discipline, drive, and continued improvement. And one of the best things about this season were the relationships that were built inside and outside of practice. Throughout the season, we found new ways to uplift each other, grow as student athletes, and practices were efficient and we had fun every day together. The dancers worked hard, and we saw great achievements throughout the season, continued growth, and we finished third overall in our conference and sixth in our section. Thanks again for having us here and your continued support.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thanks for coming.
Congratulations. Roz is also an SSP alum, if she did not mention that. So, and she was a dancer in high school. So again, that's that unique part of you have people that graduated from here that are coming back and now working with our student athletes. Next up, I'm going to bring up boys swimming and head coach Ty Krier.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. I have invited John Rowan to be with us tonight. I also invited a few other seniors that were not able to make it. I will mention them in a few moments. Our kind of highlights of the season, we had about 50 practices, swam around 188,900 yards, which is a little over 107 miles over the course of the season. The team placed fifth out of 11 teams at the section meet. The team had 15 athletes that all swam a best or performed their best in at least one event at the final event that they competed in over the course of the season. And 13 out of 26 of the individual races at the section meet were placed in the top 16, which scores. Over the course of the season, Daniel and John earned all-conference honors along with junior Noah Offling. Five athletes earned all-conference honorable mention, Ethan Burke, Caleb Schlemmer, Andrew Ritter, Colin Rathmanner, and Quinn Shannon. We had two athletes that qualified for the state meet. They were not able to be here tonight, but Daniel and Quinn both qualified individually for the state meet. Daniel placed second in team history in the 50 breaststroke, which is a relay distance, and then third place in team history in the 100 breaststroke, as well as earning academic honors with a GPA a little above four. John, who is here tonight, is a two-time team captain, won team MVP this year, and was a state competitor during his time in South St. Paul three different times. The thing that the teams, when surveyed, said their favorite parts of the season were senior night and going out to eat after meets with the team.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Great job. Thank you.
All right, next up, I'm going to bring up our theater director, Mr. Eric Holson.
Little advertising.
Little advertising. We'll talk about that in a minute. I brought a few kids with me. All right, so we're here to talk about the Winter One Act 2023. And I'm just going to kind of go, so we have, I've got Trey Allen here, who in the One Act played in the Fire Brigade, was a skit actor, and was also one of our student directors. And let's see. And I think I saw Zaden here. Zaden's here. Zaden was also in our Fire Brigade and was a skit actor and was a student director. Grace Kliniski is right over here. Grace was, played the role of Fireman Two, was a skit actor in addition to that, and also was a student director. Let's see, I think we've got Malia's here, right here. Malia played Eleanor and then also was a student director. Abby Powers, wave your hand, Abby. There's Abby. Abby Powers was the bellboy, played the role of bellboy, and also was our costumer. Lily Rosengren is right there, was in the Fire Brigade, was a skit actor, and was also a student director. Wyah Roth played Fireman One and was also a student director. Annie Voss played Bobby and was a student director. Bella Mauer over here was our props master and our lighting designer and an ASM, our assistant stage manager. I don't think Mal was here. Nope. Okay, that's everybody in my list. All right. I had some others written in case they were here. So we had a lot of statistics today. Here's some stats from the One Act. Our One Acts included one middle school one act that had 28 actors in it called The Day Aliens Attacked Fairfield. We had a competition one act, which all these actors were in, called The Still Alarm. We have, in addition to that, four student or alumni-written plays that were also student-directed. And those plays were Yes! And, Finding Strength, The Big Break, and The Anything Restaurant. We had three South St. Paul alumni who served as our playwriting contest judges. All three of those alumni are theater-degree college graduates. We had 15 students on the running crew backstage and in the booth, 16 student directors and assistant directors, 61 students total who were acting in the One Act, and eight, over 80 students who were involved in the cast or crew of the show. So the One Acts are really our biggest production of the year in terms of that, and a very developmental production in that students get roles, they get to try out things like student directing, like playwriting, and even this year, lighting design. So really happy with that. I'm going to ask my senior students, because we don't want, I know I'm supposed to keep this to three or five minutes. I'm horrible at that. But we'll ask our seniors. Seniors, I'm going to ask, you love that. I'm going to have you just talk and yeah, yeah. I would like seniors to talk a little bit about what kinds of things are you going to take out of your experiences in theater that you bring on to your post-high school life?
And people who will be seniors later, you can think about your answer for next year.
Hi, I'm Wyah Roth. One big thing that theater has given me is the ability to be more open with myself. And I've learned a lot about myself through the program. And I'm going to be pursuing a performing arts degree in college and becoming a professional actor and hopefully theater director on top of that. Yeah.
Great.
Hi, I'm Annie Voss. And something that theater has taught me that I'll take forward is definitely all the teamwork and kind of working together towards one common goal. You know, we all want to have a good production, and it's really fun to work with people who are, want to do the same thing as you.
My name is Malia, and something theater has taught me is how to be comfortable being myself, especially around people that I don't necessarily know.
My name is Abby, and one thing theater has taught me is just like confidence in being myself. And it's helped my anxiety a lot, and I felt like I've gotten better at interacting with people.
All right. Aren't you glad to know that they didn't all come up and talk now? So I still have some of these guys next year? All right, so here's why I'm going to do my plug. This weekend, we opened up the High School Spring Show, The Tempest. You will see all of these people and a whole bunch more in that production. And it's going to be a fantastic production. I got to watch a dress rehearsal today, and it was, it was just phenomenal. It's going to be great. So 7 o'clock Friday, Saturday is 2 o'clock and 7 o'clock, and then Sunday is a 2 o'clock show. And so we hope to see you all there. It's going to be a great show. So thank you for your continued support of our theater program and for all the work you guys do. And I'm going to send them on to get their...
Congratulations.
Thanks for being here.
We'll see you all this weekend.
Thanks for coming.
I've seen you many times.
Nice job, nice job.
Any of you that are involved in show choir, come back up, please.
That's like half of them are all going to turn around.
I know, it's all the same ones.
And they didn't make it very far.
So our show choir director could not make it tonight, but I do want to make sure that this group of students gets their due. This is my first year working at a school that has show choir, so I had no idea what to expect. But I know this group of students behind me is incredibly talented, and they are incredibly hardworking. You just had Mr. Holson up here talking about the one-act play. Many of these students were in the building from right after school until late at night because they'd go from one-act to show choir. As the activities director, I didn't always get around to, you know, games, practices, and so on. But whenever we had a game going on, I always loved to poke my head into the theater and just watch this group of students perform for a couple minutes. But it was a really exciting year for them. I'll kind of have a few of them kind of share some highlights. But I also just want them to know that even though we couldn't always attend their events, I did end up, you know, following show choir on Twitter, watching their performances, and cheering them as they performed online. So you guys did an absolutely incredible job. It was very, very impressive. So, highlights for the year.
So one of our highlights was at our second competition, we made finals for the first time in five years, five years. And so we placed fifth place, fourth runner-up. And that was really cool as a group. Like, a lot of us hadn't been involved in a show choir that had made finals. So it was kind of a new experience, and it was really fun to be involved in that.
I'm Elise. I'm one of the dance captains. Annie's also dance captain. And probably some of my favorite memories is the bus rides to the competitions. Those ranged from like 30 minutes to, how long was?
Six hours.
Six hours, I think, on a coach bus. First time on a coach bus. That was really cool. But I think just spending time with people who enjoy the same thing that you do and performing was, is just exhilarating. So, yeah, thank you.
Another highlight of the year, in addition to the rides and stuff, was being in Aberdeen, South Dakota, and getting to be around these people for multiple hours and get to learn more about the group members that I hadn't learned before that night, and getting to see other show choirs in different states getting to perform as well.
Yeah. Great job.
Wonderful.
Oh, they all got one.
Great job.
All right, and next up, we'll have our math team.
Hi, my name is Sarah Jane Manjo, and this is my first year coaching math team. But as many others before me have been up here, I am an alumni, class of '09. With me, I have on one side Malia. I'm sure you've never met this one before. On the other side, this is Young Ling Hu. These were our two senior captains this year. So a little bit about the math team this year. We had our five meets this year, and we scored 168 points, which, what does that mean? It means that it's the highest that we've scored since 2015 to 2016. We ended fifth in our conference by rank, fourth by points, which both are up from sixth place. A 28% score increase over last year. One interesting fact about this team is part of the math team meets is that there's a team event, obviously, math team. And the team event is out of 24 possible points. Most of the time, schools score four to eight. We were one of 38 teams across the state this year to get a full 24 out of 24, which is the first time in South St. Paul history to do that. The last thing that I'd really like to highlight is that Young Ling here did manage to be all-conference, which is our first all-conference participant in the last five years. Thank you.
Awesome. Great job.
Congratulations.
Yes, great job.
Again, you can see that we have a lot of kids that are involved in a lot of different activities. And that's something that's really unique about South St. Paul, and that it gives kids the opportunity to be involved in so many things. A lot of that goes with the coaches, the directors, the advisors that work with each other to allow those kids to have those opportunities. You don't always get that at school, so that's something that we should note. And then I think last but not least, we have Seo McDonald in our speech program.
Hi, I was double booked, so I was a little late here. But anyway, I'm glad to be here. I don't have students here today. But next year, I have a couple of kids that will be seniors, and so I'm pretty sure that we can have them come. We have a young team. I had seventh grade, eighth grade, ninth grade, and then my two juniors this year. And so we are building. There's an incredible amount of enthusiasm. So we had a successful year. We had seven competitions in the months of February and March, ending with our section tournament that was on March 22. We had two students who missed the final round, being in the top six of the section by the skin of their teeth. They ended up, they were tied for sixth and did not move on because they did not, the tiebreaker was just missed. But, so I'm really looking forward to what we're going to be able to do next year. And we already have an aggressive recruiting plan that we're putting in place to grow the team. Because since, over COVID, things got small. And so we're starting to build up again. But there's great enthusiasm, great talent, and I'm really looking forward to it. And I appreciate all the support the district has given over the years. So thank you.
I think that is it for us tonight. Thank you again for allowing us to come back. Again, as Mr. Holson said, we have the spring play this weekend, The Tempest. Show Friday at 7:00. Saturday has two performances, 2 o'clock and a 7 o'clock. And then Sunday is a 2 o'clock. Spring sports are starting. I would give you a more up-to-date schedule, but I don't really know what that looks like right now. So games are moving around as we are negotiating with ADs on who has fields that are ready to play and who has golf, who can play on golf courses that are open, and tennis matches and different things like that. But we will have tennis. Tennis will have a match tomorrow here. They will be taking on Tartan. Girls' softball is going on the road to Simley. We will have track here Thursday, hopefully, if everything warms up according to plan. So we are, we are ready. We are looking forward to getting outside. Thank you again for your continued support. Have a great rest of your night.
Congratulations. Well, it's a fun showing of stuff tonight.
Yes.
That's fantastic. All right, we're going to move on to the other report sections of our meeting tonight. The first Monday of every... The first Monday of every month, we have our public listening session. We did not have anyone in attendance, we did not have anyone submit those online, but we would certainly like to hear from our community members on any questions or concerns with a good file through there. I'm going to turn this over to Vice Chair Weber for some highlights from our committee of the whole meeting.
Hello, so as many of you may know, we have a committee of the whole meeting that takes place before this regular meeting and we have our more in-depth discussions, talk more about some of the policies of the district, different things that are going on typically whenever we have budgets or staffing, you know, presentations that go on there. Today, we had an extensive debate, not debate, discussion about the American Indian Parent Advisory and what the district's response is going, is going to be, because we have to submit that to the state. We also talked about various committee updates, talked about, you know, all the different wonderful things that are going on in our community and that summed up it, was a pretty, a pretty short call meeting today.
Excellent. All right, and next we will turn this over to Superintendent Dr. Zambrino to provide some highlights from around the district.
All right, well, thank you Chair Roche. With spring break happening in between our meetings, a little shorter update here tonight, but do hope that our, our students and families and staff had a great, safe and restful and fun and whatever they were looking for out of spring break as we now are on that home stretch. I sent an email to our staff last week welcoming them back and saying, you know, I love this time of year in the schools and I've worked in elementary, middle and high and each one's unique. It's, you know, the little ones getting to have recess outside. I know we had some PE teachers in our midst here tonight, you know, talking about getting to gym classes outside and I just know as that summertime comes and we look to transition kids from one grade to the next or one school to the next, we kind of realize that all the fun does come kind of to an end and so I think it kind of draws us in closer, which is something I loved as a teacher and administrator in a building, just the, that closeness that happens in the spring. But as we move through spring, we want to make sure people are aware, we have opportunities for summer learning and those are available and, and ready to register for on our website. So we have some early learning for kids coming in and preschoolers, our elementary students in grades one through five. Middle school does a learning academy for seventh and eighth and then there's some transition things that happen between the grades, so there's kinder camp, kindergarten camp for incoming kindergartners to get them used to what goes on in school. Packer preview for incoming sixth graders, we know that's, I was a middle school principal for eight years, I know that middle school transition, for whatever reason, I can promise you, everybody gets through it and it's wonderful, but it just seems to be the scary point. I do remember, and we got tours coming up for our, our incoming sixth graders and I remember doing those and Leah Borg is in the back of the room, our principal just kind of asking kids, who's more nervous? And it was the parents usually, they were more nervous than the kids, but, and then the Packer prep for our incoming ninth grader. So all that information available on our website and of course there's a phone number there if you want to call and ask any questions of the school. Shared last time about a teen summer job fair being hosted by Dakota Scott County Workforce Development and it's geared for teens and young adults, 16 and older, that's happening April 15th from 10 to 2. It is offsite at Galaxy Library in Apple Valley, but there is transportation provided to and from the high school. So anyone interested in that and needs transportation, you can hop on the website and find out more there. I think we heard a little bit about this already, but we have a spring high school theater performance of The Tempest. So the description which we didn't get earlier is it's William Shakespeare's final opus and it's a comedy about a parent and daughter marooned on a desert island, shipwrecks, magical spirits, love and betrayal all abound in this heartwarming and bone-tickling adventure. In the end, love and mercy rule the day. So sounds like a good time is in store. That's coming this weekend on Friday evening, Saturday a couple of showings in afternoon, evening and then a Sunday afternoon. So tickets are available in person, it could also be live streamed, so all the information you need there on the website to, to find out about how to live stream or get tickets. Mentioned this already, but the middle school tour, so we do really want to support. I joked a little bit about that being a big transition, but it is something we want to do and make sure we support our families with that transition. So fifth grade families, fifth graders and their families are invited to come tour the school. So that's happening on Monday, the 10th at 6, April 20th at 6 and then the 24th is at 5 and that's in Espanol, so in Spanish for families who need that support. They'll start in the lecture hall, so those who are familiar with the building, there's a lecture hall where you'll be able to sit and get some information and then get a tour of the school. And so they'll see the core areas, so core is a term we use when we get into secondary, so think math, English, science, social studies. You can think mess to remember that when you think of the core, probably science might be the messiest, but not sure, but that's, so the core classrooms all together, so they'll see the core classrooms and then tour some of the common spaces, things that people want to see, the media center, cafeteria, as well as classrooms. So tours last about an hour, so plan for that amount of time and then goal really to just make sure that everybody's comfortable with that transition. So looking forward to welcoming our incoming middle schoolers. Then some highlights around the district, some neat experiential learning that's gone on, so we had the Sky Dome Planetarium, so mobile ed productions brought in, it's a, a big inflatable planetarium, they brought that to Lincoln Center and then that provided an in-school field trip, so kind of nice that the kids can stay there. They're able to get inside of the dome and see and learn about the stars and the sun and different constellations and then they were able to see the night sky at different times of year from different global perspectives and then learned about constellations and Greek mythology, so a fun thing to get to do right in the school. And then another one right in the school happened at Capoja, so the Science Museum brought a traveling dinosaur exhibit. So first graders there participated in the in-school field trip, it was sponsored by Flint Hills Resources, so we appreciate that. They learned about dinosaurs and fossils and discovered how fossils are made throughout time and what bones can tell us about the creatures they belong to. I don't know if we have any dinosaurs in Minnesota, but we do have great geology for collecting fossils and we have some of the oldest rock on the planet, so hopefully that'll spur their interest and they'll get out and learn more about our great state. As always, you can follow us on your favorite form of social media, we work hard to keep information current and relevant there. And then our, oh, sorry, important dates, we wouldn't want to forget that. We have April 27th, the high school student family connections, May 30th, no school for Memorial Day and then June 8th, believe it or not, right around the corner, our last day of school. So it's coming fast and I know I got that opportunity to be here in the spring and boy it goes fast, there's so many fun events and things to look forward to tonight, was great to celebrate our winter athletics, but boy, there's just a lot, lots to be proud of here in South St. Paul. As always, our meeting materials are available on our website, so feel free to hop on there, you can view past meetings, any meeting materials, all that's available to see what's going on with our board. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Zambrino. Moving on to the next item on our agenda, we have our consent agenda. These items are typically financial claims, staffing and personnel in nature. These items have already been presented in the board packet and discussed and do not require further discussion at this time. Do I have a motion to approve our consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. There we go. All right, then we are going to move to approve the following policies that have been under review already for three consecutive meetings. Our board policy on 201, which is the legal status of the school board, 202, school board officers, 208, development and adoption and implementation of policy and Title IX. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed and then motion will carry. Next up on our business items, we are looking for approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the resolution proposing the placement of individuals with continuing contract on unrequested leave of absence. We'll call Joel Maltier up. I am looking for a motion to.
So moved.
And second.
Second.
Discussion. Joel Maltier.
Thank you. So tonight I'm bringing forward the proposal to place an individual on, who's on a continuing contract and has the rights on an unrequested leave of absence for the 23-24 school year. On March 27th of 2023, the school board approved a resolution discontinuing and reducing positions, which included the elimination of the IB coordinator positions throughout the district. We do have a continuing contract teacher in those IB coordinator positions who has continuing contract rights within the license area, which could potentially bump another teacher in that same license area who has less seniority. So the resolution before you tonight is to potentially place that teacher on a unpaid leave of absence, or I'm sorry, unrequested leave of absence for the 23-24 school year.
Any questions or further discussion? All right, resolutions require a roll call vote. Lisa, will you please call the roll?
Director Lolliberty?
Yes.
T Felton?
Yes.
Biermann?
Yeah.
Weber?
Yep.
W Felton?
Yes.
Claflin?
Yes.
And Roche?
Yes.
That's seven ayes?
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we are going to move on to our board member reports to provide a brief report from their committee work or events they have participated in or seen a passion. Can I begin with Director Claflin?
Yes, thank you. From the local issues meeting earlier in March, I wanted to share some information that might be interesting to students who have a passion for journalism. Town Square Television is helping to sponsor a workshop on grassroots journalism and that event will be held on April 22nd, coordinated with the uptake and will help get some experience and training for any students who are interested in pursuing journalism.
Excellent. Director Lolliberty?
Nothing at this time.
And Director Biermann?
I just have a thing, I don't have any meetings, but I'd like to just correct a slight thing that John, you accidentally said that Citizens Comments was the first Monday, but it's the first meeting, which is the second Monday.
Okay, thank you.
Just so a bunch of people don't show up at City Hall a week early.
Thank you. Director Wendy Felton?
Yeah, I just want to pass along some fun things kind of at each building, which will be coming up. The first one I want to talk about is at Capoja Education Center, which is coming up next week on Tuesday, April 18th. It's what they call Family Fun Night, which will be a lot of fun for families from 5:00 to 7:00. This program will run and they're offering dinner, it's $5 a person, there's, be serving pizza, be a beverage and they're going to have some DJ music, so that'll be fun entertainment. There'll be drawings for students and the money that is raised at this event is put to the Education Foundation Scholarship, which is given to a Capoja education student who will be graduating coming up in this June. And then at Lincoln Center, they've got a, could have kind of a fun event tomorrow night. It's going to be at the West St. Paul Culvers Restaurant, it's called Dinner with the Principals. So Principal Starkman and Assistant Principal Edelson will be at Culvers tomorrow night working. They'll be helping out in the, in the restaurant table area, so if you want to go up to Culvers tomorrow night between 4:00 and 8:00 PM and have a wonderful dinner and it, money will be donated to Lincoln Center, so that, that'll be a lot of fun. Personally, I like Culvers a lot, so it's good food. And then one thing at the high school for our juniors and seniors, prom is coming up. It's going to be a week from this coming Saturday, it's going to be April 22nd, that's Saturday night, and it will be held at the Mall of America. There will be, of course, walking on the auditorium at the high school and then after that, the event is held at Mall of America, so it's always something fun to see, so look forward to all of those events, so thank you.
And Director Tim Felton?
Nothing to add this evening, thank you.
And Director Monica Weber?
As we celebrated our winter sports today, I was walking my dog just before this meeting and we had to pull over to the side of the sidewalk as the track team was running right behind us and as much as she really wanted to smell every single student who passed, we stepped off to the side and just waved at all the runners that were, that were running by on the sidewalk. So it, it does prove a point that, you know, hope springs eternal and so does spring sports eventually in Minnesota, so that was my highlight for the day.
Excellent. With no further items on our agenda, I am looking for a motion to adjourn on the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries and the South St. Paul School Board meeting of April 10th is adjourned at 7:06.